Yeah, six, yeah. I got it. Rings. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll read the Delworth, Willen, Felton School Mission Statement. In partnership with the communities, the mission of the Delworth, Willen, Felton School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect so to become self-directed, responsible, lifelong leaders. Okay. Agenda, I know we had an update to agenda or roll call, I guess, first. Everyone's here except for our fearless leader, Lindley. We've got Principal McKeev and IT Director John Jameson, as well as University Community. And in cheekness to the agenda, you guys got it? We have a motion to adopt it.
So?
Motion by Nicole, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion? None, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion passed. Public comments, we can have public comments today, rebel recognition. Well, so, it was brought to my attention today that we have a junior that bowled three three hundreds over the weekend in a bowling cup. Yeah, okay, Lucas Herzrude, did I say it right? Herzrude? Yeah, so, he got a turkey in three hundreds. I mean, I got three strikes once and it was really cool. I did, oh, they did a deal, so Brooke shared with me this afternoon, KBRR has a clip on it, so I thought she shared with me. I mean, three hundred in itself is an amazing feat, he did it twice on Saturday in this tournament and once on Sunday. So, I mean, you know, three hundred, you guys know is a perfect game, right? So it's all strikes, I mean, it's just unheard of. So, kudos to him, I thought, you know what, that's worth bringing up, so thanks, Brooke for sharing.
It said that our, their team, the DGF team or whatever, has the record national right now.
I mean, yeah.
Amazing. I also just hope I get a hundred, so.
Yeah, I got a hundred and thirty-one. Put the bumpers, I put the bumpers up and I got a fighting chance. But I just thought, cool, congrats to him and good luck, I think he's, I think, does the tournament keep going or something? And it sounded like next weekend too, the way they were talking, I don't know the whole story, but kudos to him, I thought, sweet, congrats. We don't have a bowling league or anything, but it still had us cool. That's not bad. Any other public, or any rebel recognition?
I thought the kindergarten went pretty smooth, I mean, for us at least, it looked like it was attended well. It was nice to see all the faces and little kids, they also did tie in and.
They had a nice place for pictures, I saw.
Got to see all the classrooms and the teachers and all the staff, so.
Good, thank you.
And we also had a volleyball tournament this weekend, of course, this year we had procession running smoothly and everybody seemed happy and their games were ahead, so all the parents were super happy. She ran a really good, um, kind of a fun gathering.
I heard of one five-year-old that wasn't in P, her sister kept winning, so. Her sister getting too wealthy. All right. We'll go on to reports, activities director.
Be brief. First thing we're doing is we're petitioning the high school league for a bowling team. Spring season is on us, spring season is always fun, our fields are pretty much underwater, our baseball field has about five different sets of pipes coming out of it, so it's unplayable at the moment, so hoping a lot happens in the next week, other than hopefully the storm stays west. Golf, once again, our relationship with the country club has been pretty good, so our teams are a lot out there, they just haven't opened their course, and then once we do that, we'll figure out a way to, we alternate, so they don't get too many of the kids out there, but that's been, been a pretty good relationship with them. And then track right now is the only activity in the spring that we've been able to actually compete in, and that was kind of a skeleton crew in Bemidji. And then we've got both of them, so basically this week, everything's been canceled, they're postponed. There's an indoor in Bemidji we'll look to get into, but last minute, but that's what we're gonna kind of, it's gonna be what it is, it's gonna be, it's nice out, and we can play it, we're gonna scramble and try to play it until we get some consistent weather. Other than that, athletes are confined to lifting weights outside, which is okay, they seem to embrace that, it's kind of neat, but we'll go with whatever comes our way. Any questions?
True to your work.
True to your work.
Uh, thank you. Thank you. Technology report. Speaking of kids lifting outside, as I'm coming in outside and they're listening to Monty Crew Live Wire, and I'm thinking, that's the music I listen to. That's awesome, I'm like, that's my listening place, read all the control of the music or the kids are gonna listen to Monty. Real quick, just instructional tech overview, and then I'll go to an operational review. From the instructional piece, we introduced clever, you know, this year, and this is a tool that we kind of talked about looking before, but it gets used by different ways by different staffs, so the primary grade teachers, it creates little QR codes for the kindergarten first grade students, they can literally just scan the card in and log them, and it can bring them right to the teacher's site, so heard some positive feedback on that. It gets used more in the backend process by middle school and high school staff, as it does rostering, while it's not exciting, it saves time, it saves the teacher from not having to manually build these classes on some of the tools that we use, GoVer and some other, you know, pieces, so it just updates when, when our content gets updated in the synergy. Having some casual conversations with staff on just trying to increase the awareness of digital subscriptions. We know we got more devices and we're trying to be as efficient as we can, but trying to find that balance on, hey, when we need to make a change, for whatever reason, what's that fair amount of time to give staff a notice in advance, so we're not pulling the rug out from, you know, from anyone, but also make sure that staff feel like, Eric, if you're going to invest some time and actually put in some resources, we know we're gonna be in this, this partnership or contract for X number of years, and talking with, with different groups, the kind of the general consensus was, all right, if they have at least one year notification in advance after a pilot and we have some migration options, that's like a fair, you know, fair balance, but we're going in this year with a thousand other things going on, and said, hey, we're not looking at making changes now, but I, it's something we need to continuously talk about, because sometimes when we start looking at digital subscriptions, long-term contracts, we want to make sure we got the right partners at the table and we're making, you know, sure this works beyond three to five years. Ryan is continuing to build relationships with staff, teachers working with teachers, so he's down at the elementary, you know, classrooms, doing digital citizenship, he was doing some, some eighth grade podcasts with the corps, he's got video making, you know, options, he's got block coding with some of the third grade, you know, teachers going on, doing research for some of the math teachers, you know, at the high school area, so it's really been nice to have him work on, I didn't say those kind of classroom, you know, tasks, but we're kind of survival mode on the day-to-day operations, so it's kind of saying, yeah, he works with that, with those teachers, take those in-depth tests. Operations overview, DGF was lucky to secure three hundred and eighty thousand dollars on ECF funding, so we had the first round, which is about a buck six or a buck eight, and then there was a second round that opened up, so we were able to secure that both, both times, so this is above and beyond the estimate, this is tied with technology during the pandemic, because we have a lot of rate fix, repair, you know, items, so that's helped free up some capital. Expenses, again, not, not exciting, but it's a significant dollar amount, so every bit counts. Spending a lot of time just ongoing task with construction, you know, we're busy kind of day-to-day operations, but a lot of times we just spend time electrical, voltage, what's worked well, what hasn't, and it's just ongoing, you know, but try to provide solutions, keep moving forward, so. With that being said, any thoughts, questions, concerns for me? So, all right, so I'm good.
Right, the board. Personal committee. So I'll just give you an update on that. First item was negotiations with non-certified staff and the admin team, so we're just at the starting point there, there'll be more come, as we could start working through that. Fiscally year twenty-three, staff changes, staff assignments, consent, and so, just started with that, I don't know if there's been feedback, but fiscally year twenty-three, room assignments, this is underway, so it's gonna be a process. Reading math interventionist update, we have some security, thirty-two dollars an hour. Job postings, this is one that's dynamic, so the AP, AD, I don't know.
Yeah, it'd be in the, or the agenda tonight.
Business position, didn't have any applications.
Yep, yep, so that one's gonna stay on, so if you want to go through that, that I shared earlier. This is, the business position, we haven't had any apps on, or haven't received any apps, so we're playing with, if we don't post, if we, we're gonna kind of deceive, but that's gonna be a position that Katie and Joe and Wayne are talking about how they could do it with the middle school community, so we might not fill that position for this year if, if we can't find anybody, so that's kind of where we're at with that.
Currently posting for elementary education, I have ten applications so far. Early childhood, special ed, we have three applications, middle school band, we have seven applications, and we filled the special ed, the speech, the A, industrial tech, and of course, the assistant principal, I think, so. And they're planning to post the middle school choir tomorrow, after admin or agenda today, so I think that's pretty much all we got, and then on our.
And I did connect with MSA's representative, and that's for non-certified, he said they were not ready either to start negotiations, and he was sitting there with survey, I think it's this week, so, to his staff here, and then we'd be discussing that shortly, so.
So, that's the parent group and?
Yep, parents, cooks.
Can, parents.
Yep, custodial, rules, family.
Okay. Any other board committee reports, or any other questions on that?
We just renewed policy, I mean, did you have any, we didn't have a meeting on it, about the policies that were sent out, pretty cut and dry changes to the policy.
Yeah, I think we have a meeting.
So that's the new report. We'll go on to six point four, superintendent report.
All right, I will not be quite as quick as those two, but I'll try my best. First of all, I want to thank John for all of his work, that three hundred and eighty thousand dollars that he talks about is, plays a significant role in our budget, and especially with the building project, and he's, he's spent a lot of time on that, he's on top of that, he's not missing out on those opportunities that some people don't realize are out there, so we're just, just wanna give John a shout-out on that, and the time he's spent and what he's been able to, to get in grant money has been substantial, so, just kudos, John, thank you for that, really appreciate it. So that's, I just threw that on top there, but insurance update, so, health insurance, March thirtieth, we got the, the letter from Pete, which shocked the world, I guess, saying that there's gonna be a fifty percent increase to our premiums, unacceptable, I've been visiting with Representative Mark Court on this, he has reached out to Pete himself, we're working on opening a hookup with him this week if he's around, I know they're out of session, so I was hoping to hook up, I sent a message to him today, and I said, if you're out, you're taking a break, I get that too, we don't have to meet when we come back next week. Did meet with other, fifteen other superintendents today, that are all going through the same scenario. We have Baller, that you know we've hired, they have already, we gave them the paperwork on Friday, so it's going up to bid, I didn't get a date back on that, it might be, I'm hoping that sometime next week, because by May thirteenth, we're supposed to make a decision, which is ridiculous, they gave us a month and a half, six weeks, to make a six hundred thousand dollar decision, it's ridiculous, so, here we are, so, talking with other superintendents, we're in a conundrum, because our claims are, and our usage are high, and now we have to go to bid when we're in a worse position, it's like you turn in automobile claims on your, on your, on your car, once a month, every three weeks, and now go get it, now go out for bid and get a new premium, you can imagine what that's gonna look like. So, what's gonna happen here, and we're meeting with Baller again on Wednesday, and we're gonna talk to them about the bid process, when that's gonna be done, so we can look at them, so we can share them with staff and say, okay, here are our options, obviously it's gonna affect out-of-pocket, it's gonna affect deductibles, it's, we're hoping to go some other direction, the problem is those other directions aren't gonna be a whole lot better than Pete's, just because of the situation we're in. One of the things we're going to talk to our representatives and senators about is, Pete was supposed to be so amazing, because you're in this big pool, well, then they sent out, according to what we're hearing, that there was a letter sent to these schools saying, now you're individual schools, you're not in our pool, you're in the pool, but you're individual. So they did that a year ago, I guess, every superintendent that I talked to today, I'm a newbie in the district, everybody else had been in their districts, they don't remember this correspondence, they don't remember any information coming from Pete saying this, and now we're being individually kicked out, they're identifying the high users and kicking them out, or not kicking them out, but they're saying you got a fifty percent increase, in other words, you know, it's kind of do get you out of our pool. Of these fifteen schools I was visiting with today, the superintendents, the Lake's Country Service Cooperative, or Northwest Service Cooperative, or the other cooperatives in the state, are not super interested in bidding these, because it's gonna hurt their pool. So what we're gonna get is we're gonna get an individual bid from a Blue Cross Bushido or a Medica and/or health partners, and whatever we can reach out and get, or whoever's interested in admitting us. We may, that might be our other issue, who wants to bid on this?
That would take the time.
Why take the time, or it's gonna be something your people don't like, and this is obviously concerning, we just negotiated a contract, we gave our certified teachers more money to go to the health insurance if they'll take it, and now we got this. So, it had been nice when the renewal happened before I got here in June, that you knew about an increase was gonna come, how about a, hey, your usage has been up, we're going individual, we might have some issues here, so just giving you a heads-up, so you could have made an intelligent, back then, Brian could have made a different decision potentially. There was no decision we made really back then for him, it was like, yeah, renew, because it's the best percentage, we can't get anything else right now. Three months later, well, six months later, we get this, so this is the other part, is it a, it's, it's, it's not breaking the law on their part, because they get to manage their independent, you know, it's a for-profit operation, but it sure doesn't feel ethical. And that's one of the other angles we're looking at, is there's no warning, I mean, they're, of these other fifteen, I mean, we're in a bad place, but there's people worse out than us, not just on premium rates and that, it's just how they're gonna go to bid, and they, it's, I don't know, I have worked on it every single day, it's on capacity, whether connecting with somebody, working with Baller, and looking at what's gonna happen there, so is Rhonda, visiting with other superintendents, other plans, other thoughts, and I guess our angle with these state reps and centers is, put us all on this public employee insurance plan, which is what it is, with all the state, state employees, and make us a pool, and have us all take on the hit, that's why you're in a pool, and so that's what we're gonna ask for support in that, again, Pete gets to run their program and wow, so, order timing.
Is Pete there for profit? But do they have some sort of statutory charter, or I mean, do they have some, I mean, if it's public employees, I suppose it's not necessarily recommended by the state in any capacity.
The state, my understanding is, there was a big push to get into Pete and getting Pete, I'm sorry, there was a big push, and now, don't quote me, in six, eight, ten years ago, big push to get Pete into public education, they were not before that, to my understanding. It's a big push to get him in, there was a group that really wanted that to happen, it happened, all the other providers in the state said, good luck, you're gonna get a great deal for a little bit, but there's no way that can be affordable over the long run, and you're gonna get now, so now, when I call those people and say, can you help? They said, I hate to say, I told you so, but, so we told you, but as far as school districts, the reason they did it is they couldn't give their employees a pay raise. Their take-home pay was less every year, because the health insurance was going higher than what you could give them for a salary, and the districts couldn't afford to give more, they gave, you know, three and four percent, and it still didn't cover the insurance, so your people were going, hey, this is fun to work for you guys, I get less pay every year, but it was a reality, and so, and that was through the service coops, that's through the Blue Cross Bushido groups, so then Pete came in to save the day, well, so people jumped at it, right, because we could get a pay raise, or we could give our teachers a pay raise, so they do it, and here we are today, they decided that it's not so time to take in the hit, so now they're gonna say, we're not taking anymore, and not gonna give you, you're gonna give you six weeks to make a decision. So, that's part of my plan, and we're working hard to try to come up with a solution. Yeah, so a lot more on that, again, meeting with Baller on Wednesday to get more information from them. Construction update, I'm meeting with Kip, our lawyer, a week from tomorrow, in person, it'll be in my office, and we're gonna go through a bunch of stuff, so, construction keeps moving forward, one site's a little farther ahead than the other, but we're still looking at the end of August, they're pushing really hard to get that to happen, they're gonna have a lot of people on site this summer, if they'd like to get into rooms right now to get started on it, but we have kids in them. So we're saying, we'd like you in there too already, except for, oh, by the way, there's twenty-five kids in that room every hour, so, anyway, yeah, it is what it is, we're visiting, I'm visiting again with Kip a week from tomorrow. Oh, and the shop plans I have here tonight for the facilities committee meeting, so boss has got that, that's been sent off to the state, so I can show you what our plans are with that. Thursday storm, I don't know why Brooke Bell could put this on, I'm kidding. There is no storm, because we've decided there's no more storms, anyway, we'll see. This week, I just, I guess the reason, and I do appreciate you putting it on there, because we did talk about, if we have another storm day, that would be Monday, a week from today, that would be super popular, but, so, I will do my best to make sure that we stay in school, we also have to be safe, it sounds like the latest news is it might stay a little bit more or less, and I think we're gonna escape the bad stuff, you know, the wind blows a different direction tomorrow, I know, but we'll just keep an eye on it. Any thoughts, concerns on if it's a disaster and I have to make the call on Monday, it is what it is, are we still good with that, or?
What's our next alternative? Just in, in the main?
Was it the twenty, I apologize. I'm trying to totally avoid weather. Was it May twentieth on it?
Yeah.
I'm assuming, that's a Friday. So. So, just for everybody's sake, we're gonna just put on snow tires, and we're gonna, I don't know, I'm gonna do my best to keep us here, obviously I need people to be safe. You noticed that we were one of very few schools that didn't go two hours late. I drove, I was up early, and was driving all over the place, out my direction, it was bad, this direction, it got better and better, and I went north of town, south of town, and I just said, no, at four thirty, five o'clock, I said, no, we're gonna go home, so, I think it was the right decision, and it just probably goes in popular with kids, and if I was a kid, I'd say, what's he doing? And I don't like making the call in the morning, so I get up at four, and I said, this is the great thing about not making the decision the night before, you get to get up at four in the morning and go driving, but, no, I think it was the right call, and hopefully we have a similar situation this week, so. Questions, thoughts, anything else for me?
Do you, insurance, have we got any more update on the Delworth, you have four issues?
Well, so, yes and no, they, I took what they were gonna give us, I shared it with our insurance agent, I talked to him this morning, actually, Greg Johnson, he was gonna be checking with Liberty, he was out last week, so he did not see my email and my questions last week, he, I talked to him this morning, asking him again, what did you hear, and he hasn't talked to him yet. I, what we're doing is, we're trying to find out if our insurance company, Liberty Mutual, will appeal and go after their insurance travelers, so we can get more money out of the deal.
At some point, you could, would you get Kip involved?
It's potentially.
Yep, that's just, yeah.
I'm thinking of getting next Tuesday, and I'll add that to the agenda. Yeah, so good.
So the thought is, we need to replace the floor or pull it up?
It's seventy-seven thousand dollars to replace the floor and repaint to finish, they're giving us ninety-six hundred, I think it was. So, they said that the mold, their understanding was the mold was not caused by them, that's what they determined. Nordic companies has said, it could, it could have been, and it could have been there for a few years here, and since it was sealed, we didn't realize it, but he said it is also very likely that it could be from this situation, which we'd have to rip the floor to really the investment region, we know there's mold there, where it's worse, where it started, you'd have to uncover, he said you just have to tear the floor up, which when we tear up the floor, we're rolling the dice, Kevin. Are we gonna have, yeah, it's just.
Just not this year.
Well, we have to also decide that, we have sealed it now, we've spray sealed it, so the smell has gone away, because we're sealing it, on the other hand, we also know it's there, and so we have to make decisions moving forward with that, I'm hoping that Liberty will go, get into the appeal process and go after travelers, we fought with them once, I got an extra six thousand, I'm hoping Liberty can fight with them and we can get sixty more thousand. I don't know, I mean, we're gonna jump through these hoops, to hopefully get everything we possibly can, fight for it, at the end of the day, we are gonna, as a board, have a big decision to make.
Well, I mean, how long will the seal last?
I don't know, that's why I want Nordic companies, I'd like Lars to come back and give me a real, let's say, we're saved, we're sealed, but yes, for how long, is this a year, can we buy it this time, he can do his readings again with, now it's sealed, he can say, hey, your hair is okay, I gotta get all that verified, I just do, because we have to do what's right, and it's just, it's just another seventy-seven thousand? That's it? All right, any other questions? Thanks, Ron. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
All right, we'll go on to seven point one, for a little minutes, do we have a motion? Motion by AD, do we have a second? Second by Laura. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say aye. Motion carries, consent agenda. We've got.
Um, we've got, uh, what, uh, claims, um, bills to date for April, Laura, do we have a number there?
Yep. $68,826 in excess.
The treasurer's monthly budget report is in your packet. Uh, we have a non-renewal for Lisa Frank, special education teacher, retirement of Marcia Spicer, paraprofessional, effective the end of the 2021, 2022 school year, and resignation of Nathan Thielen, middle school choir, effective end of the 22 school year. So, I apologize. So Ron is not here and Joe is here. Is that what his letter said? Because this.
It's empty, effective May 21st.
Of 21.
22.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, not 21, but a 22?
Yep.
So it said effective May 20th of 2022?
Right.
So that's what would be a correction in the date here. So I just wanna make sure that we have that correct in this.
Maybe what?
It's the end of the 20, 2021, 22 school year.
So we could just change that to 21, 22 school?
Yeah, there you go. I just wanna make sure the dates were right on this. And then also approved the resignation of Ken Bedore, paraprofessional, effective April 21st, 2022. Do we have a motion? It's by Nicole. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Brittany. Any discussion, question?
I didn't see anything in the news. Do you see anything, Laura, that would not apply soon?
I just thought they were fantastic. $60,000. Oh, can we have that again? Yeah, I, I guess, I had one thing, oh, yeah. And I called the insurance on it because the windshield was replaced on the vehicle for around 49 bucks. We did a little digging on the insurance and that's the way it is, so we're gonna get a bid on what, if we wanted to increase our windshield coverage, what it would cost.
Take a little air or a deductible?
Right, or whatever, because it's a $500 deductible right now, 449 is under 500. So you're regular, I just thought that jumped out and I'm like, huh? But that's what our coverage is, it is what it is, so we'll get a bid on that too. So I wanna make sure. Any other discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we'll go on to 9.1, records disposal. Do we have a motion? Motion by Eevee, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie. Any discussion on this? Soon this is just, uh, uh, standard what we do here every year. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carries. 9.2, second grade teacher, do we have a motion?
No motion.
It's by Brittany. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Cole. Any discussion? Yeah, the discussion would be, this was the other thing we talked about in the personal committee meeting, um, last week, or I'm sorry, last, the last board meeting, was that our numbers in the second grade were getting close and we, so we decided during that meeting that we wanted to add a section, but we wanted to bring it obviously here to you guys. It's a section that's already there, so we don't really need to add it, but it's just based on what we had originally set for next year, the number of sections. This is to, uh, our class size would be 20, 22.6 without it. With it, I think it's 18.9 or basically 19. So that's what the decision's, I'll just give a little background on what that was if you weren't here for that meeting.
So would there be another motion down the road once we hire a person?
Yep. Yeah, we do have 10 applicants, uh, so that would be a group of people we'd interview for this, yep.
Are we just hiring one elementary teacher at this point?
Yep, right now it'd be this one and, yeah, and so let's, yeah. The nice thing about it is if we have to add more, the one thing we talked about kindergarten roundup with our numbers, word our numbers, that's the other class or grade that we might need to add somebody. And so hopefully at least 10, there's somebody that else doesn't get a job that we really like. And so if we get a kindergarten change that we could add somebody here, I don't know what to see.
Did those numbers come up then after Rhonda?
Uh, it was 77, if my number's correct. I think it was 77 that showed up. And so there was some new and, yeah, we're, we want more. I'll just say it that way. I know not everybody's running around going, hey, I gotta get my kids in it for next year. And there's some that are really on the stick on that and some aren't. I wish we had more facility new. Uh, I think we're probably gonna add 30, 40 more, but they're not on paper yet, so it's, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's not a fun, yeah, it's, yeah. So we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carries. 9.3, administrative contract, uh, go ahead, a motion. By Eevee, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. Uh, this motion to hire Katie Holmes, assistant principal, athletic director, effective July 1st, 2022. Any discussion? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, 9.4, this is certified contract for Brown Swamp, industrial teacher, BA step one, effective the start of the 2022, 2023 school year. Do we have a motion? Moved by Laura. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion? Again, as student teaching with Kip right now, he's the one, or he's done now, I guess, I'm sorry, but he's the one that's been student teaching with Kip Bosler. So high recommendation from Kip Bosler. Any other discussion or questions? Here are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same, motion carries. And then 9.5, certified contract, this is a contract, uh, due, uh, for Emily Brest, speech language pathologist, MA slash step two, effective the start of the 2022, 2023 school year. Do we have a motion?
No motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Cole. Any discussion? I think we knew about this, we were talking about.
Yep.
Yeah, we knew, we had a sign for our last meeting and we just didn't give it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion carries.
Question for you, David, when you were bringing up, you mentioned something about an ag teacher. We haven't hired an ag teacher that way.
We have made the offer, it's accepted, we just don't have a signed contract yet. So, yep, so that person has been interviewed, or there was three of them that they interviewed, and they did offer it to one. Uh, he has accepted, we just haven't had a chance to get together. We also, one of the other hires you said in there was our special ad, but same thing, we don't have it signed yet, so I don't like to, yep, we've hired people that have accepted, but I don't wanna do a board action until it's a signed contract.
Yeah, I don't like this one for Emily.
Yeah. Yeah, same thing, yeah. She had accepted previously, but we didn't do board action because we didn't have a signed contract.